My statement. You were okay with my statement?
Yeah, it's awesome.
Yeah. We can talk later, but I didn't know how this statement to deal with. We can talk about it.
What's up, Rich?
All right. Thank you, everybody. It is Wednesday, 3 September, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the Waterville Valley Select Board. I'm Rich Reed, the chair, and with me here today is Wendy Rathkeberg, Vice Chair, and Dan Bancroft, Select Board Member. So we have a quorum. So I'd like to start today with the statement on behalf of the board with regard to the situation involving our town manager, Mark Dakota. Since everyone here or listening to this meeting has probably already heard about Mark's medical condition, the board would like to say a few words on the matter. First and foremost, the board and town staff wish Mark and his family the best and hope for the quickest possible recovery. Mark is a friend to many of us, and the news last week that he suffered a serious cardiac event was as unexpected as it was distressing. The board and town staff will do everything possible in their realm to help Mark and his family make it through this very difficult time. The board has received numerous inquiries about Mark's medical situation. It is not the board's or the town's place to comment on this. Mark is a town employee, and the town is subject to the HIPAA Act and is therefore legally required to protect its employees' sensitive medical information. Moreover, Mark's wife Nancy has asked that the board and town staff not discuss Mark's medical situation. Accordingly, we will not do so. Finally, the town's residents and property owners can be assured that town operations, plans, and duties will be conducted at the high standards expected by them, the board, and this town staff. Mark was fond of saying, quote, "If I am ever hit by a moose," unquote, "these are the things that are done and these are the things that need to be followed up or followed through." To that end, he has assembled a competent and responsive staff led by experienced department heads. They know what their duties are and what is expected of them. As is normal, when the town manager is absent for any length of time, expected or unexpected, the board will soon appoint an interim town manager until Mark's situation clarifies and the board is able to take further action. Thank you for that. Okay, privilege of the floor. Anyone here for privilege of the floor? No, okay. Minutes approval. So we had actually three now. I think we're okay with the 19 August with no changes. That leaves us the 23rd July and the 6th of August. Are we ready to do one of?
I mean, we've submitted, I've submitted corrections, but I haven't seen the revised drafts for the 23rd or 6th, but I would, I would put forward a motion to approve the August 19 minutes.
Okay. So why don't we do that then?
Yeah, that's fine with me. Just an update, Jen is actually working on the other sets right now.
Okay, so we'll just pick them up next meeting.
I got a message from her, Rick, for coming to the meeting.
And we have one more, I think it was the 20th? Is that correct?
The 20th.
Of August?
Yeah, we were a week late on those because she didn't realize we'd have a board meeting.
Right, okay.
And so I have now gone through and reviewed those and edited and made changes.
Okay.
Went back again this afternoon in response to some of Rich's comments, and I've now let her know, and she's going through and looking through that again.
Okay, so we'll have three, two that we've looked at and one that the board, as a board, hasn't seen yet. So we'll just defer those three sets.
Yeah, I caught at least a good handful of some of the issues that you were looking for.
Okay, great, great, thank you.
In that last set.
So it sounded to me, Wendy, like you made a motion?
You made a motion, yes, for the 19 August minutes to be approved.
Okay, I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's move on to new business. So it's time for MS 535 review and signature.
I should have, you should have that prepared by the end of the week for the board. I'll be working with Katie remotely to get that completed. I spoke to our representative at the Department of Revenue. It was technically due on the first, but she, under the circumstances, is fine for the small delay. She said we'll have until 9:30 to get that completed.
Okay. So we don't have to wait till a next meeting? That's just a form that we're required to sign? I don't know.
If just two can sign it, then that's fine.
That's right, you're gonna be out. I think two can sign it, so just let Dan and I know, actually let us all three know and then via email, and then you can just reply.
Yeah.
Not available. And Dan and I can come in and sign it when it's, when it's done.
Sounds good.
Okay. So fire permit update. Chief, I'd like to expand this a little bit, and Dylan, to include a discussion about moderate drought that the state has, I don't know if they've declared, but they've certainly, DES has certainly noted it and has recommended some actions be taken. Either of you would like to say anything on either the fire permit side of it or the drought side of it?
So we've shut down all the permits, so none of the online permit system works. And anyone who has a permit got an email that says their fire permit is suspended until we get some significant rain that would otherwise change the conditions. So for right now, no open burning. I think Jen and being posted on our social media and websites, I think that message has got out pretty well. We did work with the resort and allowed the fireworks to happen just because of the shooting location, and there was no wind, and we did put a fire watch on the shores just to make sure. We'll continue to do so until this, until it changes. So, you know, we're not the only one in, you know, in this boat. We talked about doing kind of regular checks, working with the campgrounds, but also us checking Triple I Road and that sort of thing just for, the Forest Service did find, you know, a campsite fire that had gone underground and it popped up, and they were able to extinguish it. And I expect that some of those things are occurring. And if we will take, try to take a little bit more of a proactive approach to kind of keeping an eye on those sites. Forest Service is pretty limited, you know, especially coming up during the weekends when there's gonna be a lot of people over, you know, hitting those sites, especially with the nice, if it continues to stay current conditions. So they're wrestling with it. We, we, in my report, Ware had a pretty big fire and then some other fires that popped up. They had asked us as part of mutual aid, you know, statewide mutual aid for a strike team to go down. Just, this was the time where, you know, people out on vacations, we just didn't have the personnel to do so. And we would only typically do that in pretty extreme circumstances, you know, to go, to go there really hurt when we consider it, but not at this time.
Okay. And the water side, Dylan?
Yeah, we've been monitoring the level of the wells or recovery of the wells, and nothing seems out of the norm. You know, it's slightly lower than it would be in the spring months or in the summer months, but that's pretty typical. Wet summer. So keeping an eye on, I mean, although we're, you know, on the surface, it certainly seems like we're much drier than we're accustomed to. Our wells are certainly in good shape.
Holding up.
Yeah.
So the, yes, okay.
Just to come, I did see on our forecast, we are expecting about an inch of rain, I think Friday into Saturday or something like that.
I saw that as well.
So hopefully that'll help a little bit.
Yeah, I think the drought, it's kind of unusual. We had a very wet spring, and then it's like someone just turned off the water beginning of June for the most part. So we're just three months, summer basically, coming into September.
Most of my decisions on that are based off of the statewide fire.
Right.
And it comes out daily.
Right.
So I'll monitor that for changes and then make those considerations for lifting.
That's fine, right, that's fine. So, and on those lines, the Department of Environmental Services, the last drought update was the 21st of August, at least the last one I got. And it states that the public and water system should monitor and decrease their water usage. Water conservation action should be taken both indoors and outdoors. Outdoor water use, especially lawn watering, should be stopped. Fire restrictions and permits should be followed. We are classified as in a moderate, as is most of the state, I think, a moderate drought condition. So the question I think before the board is, do we want to entertain our, looking at our drought? Let me get the exact words that we call it. Make sure I get it right. Water use restriction ordinance for the town of Waterville Valley and the Waterville Valley Water District. Any comments by the board about applying it? We've got several conditions, Level 1 through Level 4. I think it requires a public hearing? It's before we actually do it, I have to relook at it. It's been so long, I think it's been like four years since we've had.
Yeah, so you're suggesting that perhaps limiting outdoor watering would be the first?
Yeah, in line with what the Department of Environmental Service is recommending, we could issue a Level 1 restriction, which is, quote, "The public is requested to refrain voluntarily from landscape watering and to limit the amount of water used outdoors for other purposes. Landscape watering shall not occur between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m." So that's, that is a voluntary restriction. And then it goes up from there where it's not voluntary.
Well, I would think if the wells are recovering well at this point, a voluntary restriction would be appropriate, just so everyone's aware of the situation. I don't know, what do you think, Dan?
I would be okay with that. I do have, I think most people who have irrigation systems are using them overnight.
Yes.
So my only question I have is how do people get notified with respect to if they're not?
Right. Well, Section 6.
If they're not living here.
Right. Section 6 states, "Notification of intent to implement water use restrictions by the board shall be posted in two public locations and published in a newspaper of general circulation within the town of Waterville Valley or by such other means, reasonably determined to notify all affected water users." I don't recall if in the past we've actually sent out letters to all.
I don't recall that.
I think what we did, Rich, was we put them in.
In the quarterly?
No, yes, yeah, quarterly billing, because we implemented that, I believe, four years back.
Right.
It was beginning of summer roughly that we were actually putting into that drought status. So I think it went out with that second quarter billing.
Right.
June-ish, July?
Right. So when will our next, Steve, when will our next?
Mid-October.
Mid-October, that'd be a little late for it.
Social media.
Yeah, no, we have any other things we could use. I mean, I'm fine with, with going with the state's recommendation that we do what we can to limit the use without, without making it mandatory at this time.
I'm okay with.
So we can go with a Level 1 restriction. I think it's just a board vote, and then I think we can work with Steve on getting it out in the various town website.
Post office.
We usually post in the post office and here at town. Right. And as always, perhaps a little leeway at the beginning here for people to get the word. I think the issue will be the irrigation that occurs at, especially that I know is Green Peak. It's usually 8, 9, 10 o'clock at night, that sort of thing. And our, our Level 1 says that landscape watering shall not occur between 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., so they should be, they should be okay. And I think it's just a matter of routine monitoring, not having anyone necessarily go out and monitor, but as DPS is around town or anyone, DPW is around town, if you notice any landscape watering during the day, I think we can inform the people there that we have this Level 1 restriction, and we would like them to voluntarily not, not do that. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, I think it's a good way to raise awareness.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yeah, yeah, so I will, I will make a motion to institute a Level 1, let me get the, Level 1 restriction on water usage per the water use restriction ordinance for the town of Waterville Valley and the Waterville Valley Water District until further notice, I guess.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We can, we can talk more detail about the modalities later, Steve, if it's gonna work out. And let's hope we start getting more rain so we don't have to go to 11:02, then we start getting to odd even-numbered streets and all this stuff. Okay, anything else on lack of, lack of rain, fire or water? All right. Shall we move on to old business, review of dumpster enclosure submissions? Megan, can you bring us up to speed of where we are on those submissions?
Sure, so same from last week, or last board meeting, the current outstanding, which are now at the extension deadline, are the Waterville Academy, Forest Room Upper, High Country, Mountain Brook, Mountain Sun, Snowsburg, 1 and 2, Tri-Pyramid, Tecumseh 1 and 2, Tyler Spring, and Green Peak. Those all have not submitted a plan for town staff to look at. Everyone else has, and there are some people who are fixing their enclosures currently.
And when was the extended deadline up?
The 1st.
Of September?
Yes.
Okay.
So have you reached back out to them?
I have not reached back out. I wanted to get guidance from y'all, whether you wanted just to kind of say, hey, you know, you still have to submit your plan, or if you wanted to possibly implement a fine.
I don't think a fine is necessary at this juncture, but I do believe we should reach out to the remaining parties and specifically request their plans for mediating these dumpster issues.
So if we said the end of September, that would be 60 days, correct, from their original deadline?
Correct.
And perhaps after 60 days late, then we'd be looking at a fine? Is that, I mean, I'm thinking like.
Perhaps even not a fine, and perhaps we're just, we've, we've made through DPW our view on the matter of the dumpster known, and that has to be corrected by, I believe the actual date is, what, 1 July of next year?
Yes.
So if they don't wish to engage with us on what we said the deficiencies were, we will make our decision on the information we have. I don't think there would be any penalties involved with that.
Well, so, because this was, this current deadline is for them to provide a plan as to how they're addressing their deficiencies.
By 1 July, right.
Right. And so what if next July rolls around and deficiencies haven't been addressed, and that's when you would think?
I think that's, that's the plan, so to speak. I mean, that's why we gave such a long lead time, was to allow, to allow folks to correct the deficiencies, or at least talk, and many have, I think, talked to Megan and earlier Mark about their disagreement with, or not understanding what the deficiency was and what corrective actions they should take. So I don't think, I don't think the letter mentioned any, do this, submit this by this date.
It did say submit a plan by.
Right.
July of this year, and then it had to be corrected, meaning the enclosure.
Right.
And any of the deficiencies had to be corrected.
Right.
By July of 2026, or else, I believe it said that fines would be implemented.
Right, that was, that's my recollection. All right, I mean, I'm, I'm of two minds. I mean, we've given, what, an extension? I mean, how much handholding do we have to do here? I, I, we will make our decision on who's not, who's deficient, who's not, in July of next year. I'm not sure what you guys think, whether you wanna go out with another, let's say we haven't heard from you. I mean, we've done that once, right? That's why we granted the extension.
Yeah, I would suspect a second reminder with, with the admonition that anything not brought up to specs by next year would be subject to a fine, could be subject to a fine, however that wording, just as a final.
Right.
Warning, I don't know.
I would be okay with that.
All right, well then we'll do that. So whoever's left to provide us with a plan, let's do it to the end of September, because we still have to also review the ones, there are several who I think have asked to make corrections that may not fit with our current dumpster enclosure regulation.
The only one that has requested something that does not in line with our current regulations is the Athletic Center.
Okay. So that's the only one we really need to talk about?
Correct.
To give them guidance as to whether or not their solution would satisfy the ordinance, basically.
Have you spoken to them about their proposed solution?
I have, and there's mixed feelings. They said that, so at the Athletic Center, they have screening online that, right now, they take off and put on the sides for us. So we're not taking the screening down at all per our conversation with management at the property. And it was conveyed that if they're still up, we are not going to pick them up. And they understood, and right now it's being followed, it's being taken off, hooked onto the side, so we have access to it. Only concern is in the winter, when the cliffs freeze.
Right. But it sounds like they're agreeable to the condition that if they're on when the truck comes by, then the dumpsters won't be tipped.
I mean, it is literally following the letter of, of the ordinance in screening.
It's screening, it's not, does not, not require a gate, it just says it must be screened. So, and I, as I understand it, I believe I did see the letter that, that the letter club sent, I think it said that a considerable amount of money difference in actually putting in a gate versus the solution they've come up with. So, all right, let's address that again in another, let's, well, let's, let's.
Because right now, we're still assessing, and really my assessment right now would be in the winter.
Right. Well, this one, we have a, a proposed solution, and perhaps it would be useful to get back to them before, sooner rather than later. So we can, maybe, I don't know if Rainey wants to be here and when we discuss it. So why don't we, why don't we do that? Is that, if that's the only one that is looking for a solution that's?
Yep, the only one asking for a deviation at this current point.
Right, which could be considered a deviation, right? The others are, oh, okay. So why don't we set up sometime in the next couple of meetings, let's put that one dumpster enclosure on, on the agenda to discuss, let Rainey know, and we'll, we'll talk about it. It did give us a chance to review it too. Otherwise, give another 30-day extension for those who have still not provided a plan.
I'll shoot a call, email, or deliver a letter to the properties that still haven't.
Right. Yeah, please keep a good record of this. I suspect that by the time we hit 1 July, there may be still some outstanding non-compliance. Yes, Chief?
I found the reply, basically, is association are irrelevant.
Okay.
If you either suspend and remove the dumpster is more effective.
I would imagine it would be, yeah. I don't know what, off the top of my head, I don't know if we have that.
You did, I have to go back and look.
Yeah.
I think it is in there that we can remove the dumpster.
Okay, well then, that would be the nuclear option.
I'm just putting it as a, as an option that is fine and/or suspension of.
Sure.
Yep.
Removal removal of the dumpster could happen.
Right. And maybe we should remind folks who have yet to provide a plan of that.
Yeah.
If that's indeed what, how the ordinance reads. Okay. So when, see, September 24th, I believe, is our next meeting. Are you back by then?
Yes.
But we're waiting till September 30th, which should probably be our first meeting in October. And we can address it again, so, Steve, if we can get that on the agenda for Kristen, for our first meeting in October, whatever, whatever date that is. And we can also address the athletic club plan to comply at that time as well.
Absolutely.
Anything else on dumpster?
Are we gonna do that on the 8th or the?
I think we talked about, yeah.
Two weeks or three weeks?
October 8th and 22nd.
8th.
8th. I think the, is 8th our next?
Well, the 1st is the first Wednesday, but since the 24th.
Right, that's right, we have to move it to the 8th. Yeah, it'll be 8th October.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for catching that. All righty. Under old business, we have review of select board ordinances and easements. This is an ongoing process. I have that on there only as a tickler, really, that we need to reengage, you know, how these things go. In the, I think it was March after town meeting, we looked at a work plan, this may even have been before town meeting, of things we need to do this year. And of course, things that need to get done at the time of a particular day always go to the top of the list, and these sorts of reviews tend to, tend to fall, get postponed in the calendar, and before you know it, you're in October and November, and you're trying to review everything. So I would like to get started on, I think we have done some work on easements. We still need to talk to the Golden Eagle Lodge. I think we, we need to reengage with the resort in Tyrell. We've had, I believe, one discussion with them.
Right.
On that, so I think those are moving along, we need to just see where our next steps would be, but I don't recall in the Golden Eagle Lodge, did Mark say that he was going to reach out to them and set something up or at our last meeting? That's what I'm recalling.
I believe so, I will, I can reach out to TAN and double check.
Would you double check with that, and then we can get it on the agenda at some, at some meeting? Again, that's the update, that easement, we would like to make changes.
Clarify the language.
Basically, to clarify the language so that we're not in a position as a town of saying, well, this seems fair.
Right.
If you pay this amount, rather, let's get something a bit more specific for the town, for the obvious reasons.
He was also doing some work with Allen Slablogic concerning Osceola.
Yeah, I think there's just some things left over from that.
Yeah, I had a call today.
And see where it is. Yeah, we can look at, we have on here the town manager work plan, so we could, we could look at those things. I'm thinking, given the situation, that easements, the town manager work plan, which is the next agenda item, and select board ordinances, we probably should have a separate, a special meeting just to, to go over where we are with all of these and, and actually put some meat on the bones of a schedule to discuss these. So we're not doing it at, you know, at a regular meeting. I, I think the plan for the select board ordinance was to review them all, and basically, they were farmed out to the responsible department. I think most of them were DPS-related, and for DPS to finish a review and then report to the select board any changes they'd like to make or just to discuss it further. So I think we just need to implement that schedule, whether it's DPW, DPS, administration, municipal services, recreation. We don't have to do it all, and what I'm saying is that we can have separate meetings to do all this, maybe with DPS, it may take more than one meeting to go through the larger number of ordinances. Again, this is just a review. We've been finding that our ordinances are unclear in some areas, of course.
Yeah, and even just grammatically incorrect.
And grammatically incorrect, the conditions have changed.
Well, we're allowing, I believe, to make grammar.
Yeah, non-substantive changes, basically, yes. Yeah, to clarify, right, as long as the clarification isn't more than.
Changing the context.
More than the clarification, that's it, yeah. So we could do that, and that's why we wanted to go to, we can do that before town meeting, but any substantive changes, we'll have to bring those to town meeting, so that, that's why the idea was to get it done this year, decide if we had any, needed any warrant articles on a town, on a town ordinance.
Right.
We've done one last year and the one the year before that, and I must say that the record of bringing town ordinance changes to town meeting has been less than satisfying, not only because we didn't get the changes we thought were warranted, but it led to other discussions that really made things more difficult, but that's the nature of that really made things more difficult, but that's the nature of the beast. And I do think we need to look at them and see if there are ones we absolutely need to update substantively, then we should do it.
Yep.
Okay, so um, now I have all the departments head here, uh, any of you would like to kick this off, uh, not today, obviously, but either if, if it's, you only have one or two, either at a select board meeting, or if we wanna uh, schedule a special meeting where we can do, you know, two or three to five, I think we need to do DPS by itself, right, I mean, it's, you've got a number of them.
Both of them.
Yeah. Yeah. So what, what you guys think? Have any, I take it you haven't had really a chance, given the press of normal operations, to really review ordinances that, that may come under your, under your remit.
I think I've done most of mine.
Okay. No, no, I think you have, we've done, we've done a number of them over the years, and some of them, we, it could be just checking the box, we've already done this. Uh, it seems to be going okay, we don't need to make any further changes. This is also meant to encompass any regulations that we have. Like water regulations or uh, other, other regulations that come under the select board purview, not site plan, review regulations, or subdivision regu, that's, that's for the planning board to deal with, but we have a number of regulations involving uh, sewer, water. And we've made some changes, right?
Mark and I were working on a three-year ordinance.
Right.
They, um, that was really directed to us, not mandatorily, but encouraged by DES.
Right.
So that, that is still in, I think it's like in its third draft form, we've done quite a bit of editing to it. Um, I don't, it's been about probably a month since we kind of looked at it.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't recall exact status of that, that's one thing that we certainly would like to move forward with and get that um, implemented, so.
Alright.
We have a department head meeting on nine seventeen where maybe we could discuss.
Yeah.
Find a schedule.
Fine, that would work perfectly, yeah, and then you can see what, what you got, I, we would like to look at all of them, but the look for many of them may be, yes, check, it's up to date, we have no changes uh, that we think we ought to try to implement, it could be something as simple as that, so. Alright, well then why don't you just let us know, uh, next meeting's the twenty-fourth, you can come up with a schedule, I mean, if anyone wants to go first, say as early as October, our first meeting in October, we might, we gotta kick it off. It gives us three months in the event any of them require a warrant, I forget how many there are, but twenty-something.
Yeah, my, my feeling is, is there, most of the ordinances, I think we've addressed through the years.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Is fine, certainly a review's good, but I think the biggest one is their zoning, and I think we're using, we're getting some help with that.
Well, SE group and the planning board are leaning at the next meeting to review zoning. But again, we'll let, that's one of those that we're letting the planning board take the lead on, there are a number of state uh, changes that we have to, uh, we have to now incorporate into our zoning, that will change our zoning. And I, I think on that, you were gonna look at the social, the social, uh, what's the correct terminology?
District.
Social district, thank you. But that, I think you work with the planning board.
Yeah.
SE group has provided us with a draft audit of those.
Okay.
ordinances, I have shared that with our consultant, Liz Emerson.
Okay.
To which she had some commentary, um, and reported back to the SE group just today on what her thoughts were for changes to that. Um, to get it ready for the planning board meeting um, next week.
Okay. I guess, well, they'll kick it off then with their review, and then after you have the meeting on the seventeenth, on the twenty-fourth, you can come to the select board with a proposed schedule for the various departments to talk about all the ordinances under their purview, and we can go from there.
That'll work.
Does that work for you guys?
Perfect.
Okay, and, and. Yeah, please continue any, uh, please uh, um, include any regulations that technically they're not an ordinance, but a regulation that we depend on, that's based on an ordinance, right? We need to make sure that the regulation and the ordinance still match up, I think we found when we were reviewing some of them that over time, the changes have been made, but they weren't compatible as, as much as they should be.
In our last meeting, we discussed the need for a new regulation regarding these, you know, accessory use and special events.
Yes.
Um, and I, I thought that, I think where that was left was Dave and Brooke were gonna draft some wording up or something on that, just notion of living, and we're gonna review that.
Right, and, right.
So we will have probably at least one regulation.
Right.
For town meeting, yeah.
Right, uh, it may not, we may not have to go to town meeting on that one, because the two, town meeting two years ago um, uh, created the parameters of what an event, a special event would be that was approved. We just never uh, followed through with the, with the, a fully fleshed out, which could be a paragraph, I don't mean pages and pages, regulation, and therefore I think DPS was a little concerned about the permit that you had drafted, what was the underlying regulation, and all we had was, you know, some warrant language, which as you know.
Sure.
Zoning language isn't quite helpful in terms of an actual regulation that someone could follow. So, uh, yeah, I mean, and that could be included, I think, in uh, with uh, review of DPS, and if there are any departments that cross, right? I mean, if more than one department has a interest on a particular ordinance, uh, we can talk, you know, both at the same time on that one. So yeah, we'll get that, add that special event, definitely to it. Anything else? And I've already mentioned, moving on, I've already mentioned the um, the town manager work plan, I think we're gonna just have to set some time aside and go over with, I think, uh, an interim manager, the uh, the status of the town manager work plan. Uh, so I think we just hold on that at the moment, reviewing that at the moment.
Sure.
And then uh, deal with the interim manager issue, and then have a meeting with, with the interim manager to discuss the twenty-twenty-five town manager work plan, does that work for you guys?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. Department head update, so we're doing old school today, thank you guys for, for coming in, all the department heads to come in, uh. Megan, why, why don't we just go ahead and start with you? I'll do the financial reports when we get to the admin, I just thought in case, then you guys can can leave if you don't wanna hang around for the rest, there's nothing else on the meeting, so have at it.
Um, so I'm sure many of y'all know that there's been work going on on triple I.
Yeah.
Um, talked with the workers, and it seems to be like wifi going in. Um, yeah, fiber optic wifi's going in, so.
Is that, is that the New Hampshire co-op, electric co-op?
Um, I believe it's the co-op.
Oh, really?
Another entity, um.
Wonder who it could be, it's not, it's not Spectrum or Charter?
He said it was coming to this building.
So.
When I asked him.
Oh, that must be, that must be them then.
That's, I assumed it was, cause I asked him.
Yeah.
And they told me.
Cause we just signed, we just signed the franchise agreement, so it makes sense, there were some changes made. So maybe that's where, we should, we should check, see who those folks, oh, I'm sorry, Dylan, didn't see you there.
This may be related, may not be, Steve and I had a meeting with uh, cybersecurity. For a cybersecurity grant opportunity, they had alluded to us unbeknownst to us and all the town staff, it is a company called First Light. That's extending, that's who it was. So that must be.
Who are they?
First Light is the name of the company.
First Light?
Yeah, that, so they, they, they actually informed us, we had no idea this was happening, I don't know how they knew, that they were gonna be extending uh, fiber optic into Wargo Valley. So, but, kind of just coincidental that they mentioned it to us, and then here they are.
Okay, so maybe it has nothing to do with uh.
I don't think it has anything to do with Spectrum.
With us, with our franchise then. Well, they are working on, I think, state and or Forest Service land, right, so at this point.
It should all be within the utility easement.
Right, easement anyway, right, we should try to just tie that down, just so that
Sure, I can.
We, we can inform people. Yeah, what's, what's actually going on, and what the purpose is. And what work they plan and actually in, you know, the town village area.
Yes.
Would be.
I would like fiber optic at my house.
Would be very, very helpful.
Yeah, but they're just boring, they're doing very minimal digging pits, just like pool lines.
Right.
But it's mainly boring.
Right, okay.
Be very minimal.
Alright.
Sound disturbance going on.
Well, if you can find out and, and if it can wait till our next meeting, it is the twenty-fourth, you can tell us then, but if there's something they're gonna be doing in town. Um, I think, uh, get the word to us and, and we'll decide if we need to, need to discuss it or not, I doubt it.
Absolutely.
Are they crossing the roads?
They are, but they're boring, so they're going underneath. So it's like a giant long pole that they pound through the ground to make a hole, they dig a hole on each side.
Okay.
Bore through and then pull.
So they're not cutting our pavement?
No, they are not cutting pavement.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be helpful in on the extent.
Absolutely.
If, you know.
Um.
Okay.
Crosswalks were painted, um, due to the weather when they were here, uh, with the slight sprinkles that were here. Um, they were concerned that if they painted long lines, that they would wash away. Um, so they'll be coming back this week or next to paint the long lines, but the crosswalks on Packards and on New Peak are done currently. Uh, that also encompasses putting lines on uh, places that were missed originally, or didn't cover correctly.
So you're talking about the fog lines and the
Correct.
The center lines.
Yeah.
Right.
Um.
Including Osceola, that's pretty.
Including also, yeah.
It's almost invisible now.
Um, the main brush trimming's been completed, we did mark out a few hazardous trees, um, that have already broken and are gonna come down or are about to come down. Um, so we've marked those throughout town to get somebody in here to remove them before winter.
Okay, any comments? On that? Alright, let's.
Be marked in pink, so.
In.
You see them?
Well, that's gonna be, I'm, I'm sure we're gonna get inquiries on that, uh, I'll be glad to sit and, and talk with you and Steve to just get an idea of where these all are.
Sure, absolutely.
Sure, we're gonna cross somebody on it, but let's see, that's. I'd like the board to be able to say, yes, we looked at it.
Right.
And we concur.
Mm-hmm. Um, all the town-owned streets, streets that have street signs are completed. Um, next up are streets that intersect town roads that are private. Um, those will be done over the course of the next year.
Right.
Um, here and there, but.
Those will be the lanes, the lanes and ways.
Correct.
Right.
All of the town-owned roads are completed. Um, we did get some new brackets, just to twist some of the signs, so a little bit more eye-pleasing, so the stop sign isn't all the way off in the woods to have the street signs where they're supposed to be. So they'll be adjusted a little bit.
Okay.
Um, just had a meeting with the Golden Eagle for the walkway for the handrail and some lighting. Um, we have a plan that we're gonna work through, trying to nail some vendors down um, to get that taken care of before winter. Um, that's about it majorly, so.
Go ahead.
Did we get the Osceola?
It is changed.
Replaced, okay, thank you.
I had a couple things, do you have anything for DPW? Um, at our last meeting, or maybe it was the meeting before that, we said we would uh, query you, the board would, on the status of the cease and desist letter for the wall that was built at the golf course, do you have any update on that? I think the idea was, we're waiting for you to say everything was done as agreed to, or not, as the case may be.
Um.
Or it's ongoing still?
It is still ongoing.
Okay.
Um, due to the rain we had a while back, and just with our work schedule and his work schedule, we haven't been able to address some of the issues. Um, but we're working together this week, actually, we just met uh, this morning, we're working together this week to get that closed out uh, to satisfactory.
Okay, so we need as a board to extend, since we formally sent a formal letter. Um, I think it's the fifteenth, right?
Uh.
I'd have to look.
I'd have to look back.
Cause I know, I think we said, but the next meeting isn't to the twenty-fourth. Uh, we need to check, uh, we can just say, uh, let's make it the thirtieth.
Okay.
Of September, if it isn't.
Mm-hmm.
Are folks happy with that? And we'll, we'll, we'll readdress it at our eighth October meeting. At that point, I think we're not talking about growing grass anymore.
Right, uh, the, there are foliage plants.
Mm-hmm, ground cover, you mean?
Ground cover that has uh, grown, so the only area in question is the part that washed out.
Right.
We'll have to establish.
At the eastern side, right, yeah.
But the rest of it's pretty established.
Right, yeah, I don't think we were hard over that it had to be a grass, I think that there was just some vegetation in there, whether it's ground cover or grass. But that's so that the land, you know, wouldn't wash away.
Hold it in place, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so we'll, we'll, so we agree um, on uh, if needed an extension to thirtieth September?
But then we would talk about it at our next.
And we'll talk about it.
Not October, right? Because we wouldn't want to, we'd wanna be sure that it's fine, and if we need an extra extension, we shouldn't talk about it.
Oh, you're right, okay, yeah, so, thank you, yeah. So we'll add this to the agenda for uh, our next meeting on the twenty-fourth, it's three weeks away, one of those periods where we're three weeks between regular meetings. Alright. Um, let me see, I think I said, was that all I have for DPW, let me just check. Um, yeah, uh, the road icons, where are we with that?
Road icons.
You know, the, the stenciling on the.
The multi-use path.
On the multi-use path, uh, we had discussed, I think it was the last couple of meetings, uh, we had discussed that what we have still seems to be inadequate to what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
We're getting uh, adult bicyclists in the lanes, when really all we want is children on bikes and pedestrians.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and anyone sixteen or older should, on a bike, should be on the, in the road per state law.
Is that a education issue really, we just need to let people know?
Well, we have, I think, Chief, didn't you write an article some time ago, not that long ago, somebody wrote an article on the Wigwag, I think, about what the plan was, or perhaps it was one of the editors that talked to that talked to you, or maybe was it, was it you, Chief Payer, about it?
I think the hard part is, is, I think what you're saying is, it's not year-round, it's the people renting the bikes?
Yeah, no, that's exactly it.
And go talk to Ian, but um, I think it's just hard to get that message out to them, because they're not cyclists, they're, they're just, they're.
Right.
They're not used to bike riding, they're just doing, it's a fun thing to do, so.
We had talked, a couple of things we could do was perhaps providing uh, handouts uh, at the Adventure Center, uh, so people could, could read it, and also maybe getting away from my icons and just going to words.
Now, if we have an adult with a child.
Well, you'd be in the multi-use path, because a child would.
You run into the issue where the adult wants to be close to their child.
Yeah, no, that, you keep them in the multi-use path.
To me.
Right.
Um, as a parent, if I'm riding a bike, and I have my child behind me, I typically want them close. So having a parent in the road because they're, you know, older than whatever the age limit might be. I'm not sure that.
No, no, I think, I think the parent would be in the multi-use path.
But I would like to think that a parent who's being cognizant of the safety of their child would be cognizant of the safety of other people's in the multi-use path. And that's where the education, I believe, needs to come in, just that it's a multi-use path, and it's not just for a horde of bicyclists to ride down it. And that's, I think that's where we're continuing to need that education.
Yeah, there are two things that are continually at issue with the multi-use paths, one is um, improper use by bicyclists, basically adult bicyclists. Um, and how do we get at that via education and or icon slash some kind of verbiage, and how, where do we place these, that strategic areas? You know, we've been wrestling with that one for a couple of years, I, I, I think the solution is simple, I think there, we could just do it. And, and just have to sit down and figure out, I know, Megan, you've provided us with stencils in the past, are there others you can look at that may be able to clarify it? The, the, the one we have now with, you know, the circle with the bike and the, the little child icon, doesn't seem to be translating people.
It might be a bit too small. It might be a bit too small.
It's, it's small, that's, that's part, that's part of it.
Yeah.
So, as opposed to putting up signs, I think we want to try and avoid putting up signs, but maybe a key areas we may, we may have to.
I mean, it's a good thing to work on through the winter, to have it ready for the spring.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Like we said last
I know, I know.
Last year, uh, but yes, we do need to stay on, on top of this. The other thing is the multi-use path being used as a, a place for delivery trucks or contractors to park. And that's an ongoing issue, uh, that's just gonna be enforcement, I think. Uh, we could put stencils in, icons in, whatever, you know, no trucks, I mean, as simple as that.
I know. It should be, yeah.
But it's because the delineators are so far, so spaced, so far apart. But it must be made, I mean, there are certain areas where it happens often, and maybe in those areas, we should, uh, have a sign or a stencil to remind vendor. I don't know, but that's the other area we need to, to work on. It's, there are times when you come across this and you have to actually go out into the street and you can't see the oncoming traffic
Right.
because of the, the bend in the road or something like that. So that's not a good, not a good situation. All right, we'll work on it over the year.
Jumping off that, the reflectors have, have, did they just kind of blow you off this year?
Uh, no.
I saw some, were they down?
So, we were trying two different versions out
Yeah.
Down here.
Yeah.
And they both seemed to be doing okay, so we're going to install them next year, um, in, in coordination with the delineators as well. Um, but the inlaid ones, they're still trying to find a vendor to come up here. They're actively, they email me every few months letting me know. So, but they are still actively trying to, cause they are committed to getting us a trial area, so they're still working on that.
Okay, I didn't realize, so there's two different types, there's the inlaid, and then the ones that you currently have are above
Correct.
pavement, okay. Okay, great.
Two things I just remembered, uh, one of which, talking about dumpster enclosures, um, it was told to me that because we made Silver Fox move their dumpster enclosure, um, that we were going to take care of that dumpster enclosure.
Correct.
I do have a quote that includes concrete, cause right now it's on asphalt, um, to bring it fully up to regulations.
Okay.
It is six grand.
Okay, no, I think that was part of the road project when we had to move it, and we said we would replace it. I remember that discussion.
Were you wanting to do that this year or have it done by next year?
We've got until July of next year, right?
Yeah, I mean, it would depend on Well, you know, this could conceivably come out of road project funds, because it was part of the road project. I don't know what the status is of our road project funds. We may have some left over, cause we're done pretty much, right? But we should have a lot left over, actually, so, um
We could look at it.
Look at that or that or contingency, I mean, we need to check, uh, check with, uh, check with the owners of Silver Fox and see what schedule works for them as well. But I, if we have the money and we said we'd do it and we can work out an agreed time to do it, should just do it?
Spring's better.
Spring better?
Yes.
All right, I mean, yeah, well, let's see what the financial side of it is, and then we, and then we'll, we'll go for there. So I think we got the input from the owner, so let's look at the, let's look at the money and see how we wanna, see how we wanna deal with it.
Absolutely. Only other thing is, we have received communication from, is it Mark Henderson? For, Mark Henderson for the Britain Land?
Yes.
About submitting paperwork, proper paperwork
Yes.
To DES
Yes.
To get closeout. He would submit, according to his proposal, um, a landfill closure plan and, uh, another letter to DES at six grand. So
Yes.
He's doing all the work, would you like to continue?
Well, yes, we had agreed to use the money we received, I think, from the FEMA, thank you, uh, reimbursement, uh, which came out of our, uh, funds initially anyway, right? So I think, um, what we should do actually is, yeah, I, I'm fine with the expenditure, I, but I would like to have a meeting with him, either Zoom or or, uh, in person, he's our environmental engineer.
Yeah.
Uh, just to see, on, on, on the Britain Land, just to see where things, what's the plan, you know, how he's, what's he going to submit to DES, basically?
Sure.
So we do have deadlines associated with that, is that not correct?
Coming up soon, right?
I forget, uh, exactly.
Yeah.
I thought it was six months after.
I think that's my recollection as well, yeah.
All right.
So if that's something you guys need to move ahead on while I'm away, you should do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let's look at that, uh
We'll reach back out to him.
Reach out back, yeah, let's see where we are in the process and, and, uh, reengage with him. See what he's gonna submit and see, make sure I, we meet whatever deadlines we agree to with the with the state of DES on the matter, so. And, and, yeah, was that the additional?
That was, yeah.
Yeah, so just on the, the multi-use path, let's keep that in focus, you know, we've been uh, fumbling our way through this, uh, for two years for really no reason. I think we can just do whatever it is we want to do.
Absolutely.
And, and help the situation, so keep that as a regular, perhaps it can go on the town manager, if it isn't already on the town manager work plan. It may be, I don't recall, it's a pretty long work plan.
It is.
But just multi-use path. And that'll just keep it on our, on our radar.
Sure, I'll look up some either verbiage or icons that we can put into the multi-use path to address the cyclist concerns.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I think that would be the main thing, and is there anything we can do other than enforcement to assist with, uh, keeping, uh, delivery trucks, which aren't too big of a problem, cause they're in and out, shouldn't be doing it. But more of the contractors doing lawn work or other type of work, which use this as a convenient, use them as a convenient parking area. See if there's anything we could do with that, perhaps in some strategic locations where we see it tending to occur.
Absolutely.
As opposed to signage, but if, if signs seem to be, I mean, let's look at the whole panoply
Yep.
and make a decision.
Well, we could send a letter to the landscaping companies that are frequenting the valley.
Uh, we could, and the property management, sure.
Certainly.
That's part of the education
Yeah.
Part of it.
Just requesting that they not bark there.
I think that's something we can do
And that's one step in the process, maybe.
I think we do that at any time. So I think, yeah, Steve, I mean, if you wanna craft, draft such a letter, just reminding everybody that the multi-use paths are not to be used for delivery and or other commercial parking.
Be enforceable by a parking ticket, right, Dave? Yes, whoa, okay.
Yeah, again, I mean, I, we really don't want to.
We can, we can do that.
Yeah.
Just toe them away, a long ways away.
It's not our preferred option, or, obviously, what we're trying to do is just to keep it from happening.
I'm just kidding.
Okay, um, thank you, Megan, uh, let me slew over to Brooke, hello, Brooke, oh, yeah.
Can I just, maybe just add Pat in there, cause I know he's good.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay, please, have at it.
Much, um, we hired, uh, sworn Nicole Bascom today, is part-time.
Excellent.
With Terry, um, Dave's already brought her up, she started the EMT and did EMT and fire, now she's, um, fits one in as police, so. Uh, short of that, we've got hockey, a little earlier this year, it's coming up at the end of the month, September, just to make everybody aware.
Is it a tournament, or is it?
Yeah, tournaments start, um, I guess two weeks early this year, it's the last weekend in September.
I think he showed us the schedule, right? We see the schedule, it's, oh, it was last year's schedule, I don't think I've seen this year's.
No, I think he gave us this year's.
Did he give us this year's, okay.
Usually it's a good running one that they do, so.
Yeah, of course.
No, short of that, that's, that's where we're at on our side.
Okay, nothing else of interest? Okay. Good, yeah, Brooke?
Um, our after-school program started yesterday, we have thirteen children enrolled, and so that's a pretty big group for us. Um, although it's smaller than last year, last year we had about eighteen, so, uh, thirteen's still a healthy size. We are busy with that, we do have, uh, two part-time staff in addition to Sandra taking on that, um, program. We also, um, have several birthday parties in the month of September, those are just private rentals. And, and we have, uh, our cycling rides continue for Thursdays, and Sunday hikes continue. However, this coming Sunday, there will be no hike, and following Sunday, it will be tri-pyramids.
Oh, wow.
We're thinking about tackling that and have it, it's a good opportunity. We did have our chalk fest, our family chalk fest on Packard Field over the weekend, it was very successful. We work, Golden Eagle has been really wonderful to work with, with utilizing their brand-new parking area, which has been nice for the chalk fest aspect. But we had lots, lots of other things going on in the field, if you didn't see it yourself, but inflatables, face painter, such, so it was a, a fun time with wonderful weather. We do have a speaker coming in on September nineteenth, Lee Webster will be speaking about the natural burial options in New Hampshire, so
No, that's, that's actually very convenient, I think at our last meeting, or maybe the meeting before that, we talked about, uh, natural burials as a way as some, that's something we could do, it's allowed by state law, but it'd be interesting to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, it's a, it's a female, and, uh, she would be
Lee, okay, yeah.
She will be, uh, presenting on that, apparently is an expert in this, so it'll be interesting to hear. Um, our big event that we put a lot of energy into this time of year is Fall Foliage Foot Race, which will happen this year on October twelfth. Lots of other, you know, programs happening around that within Town Square, so it's a busy weekend for everyone, but there's a lot of preparation, planning, and you know, the race directing aspect of it that, that goes in. We have, we have secured almost all of our sponsors, um, for, you know, the ones that, the regular ones that we get every year. And then there's a lot of other, you know, coordinating of raffle prizes and whatnot, in addition to the race itself. Um, the, the beneficiary that we chose this year is Plymouth Area Community Closet, the food bank. Uh, we felt that that would be a good option, and as a reminder, that's five dollars per, um, race entry fee gets, um, set aside and given to that, um, nonprofit, so. Tyler was there at the Getting to Know the Valley event, which is always successful, I haven't had an opportunity to talk to him because he, um, works Thursday through Sunday, and I missed him when I came in on Monday, but I'm sure it went great. And the boats were very busy over the weekend. I think a combination of the last sort of hurrah and also, um, the beautiful weather, so.
Are you doing them just on the weekend now?
Yes, so we did it three-day weekend, of course, but right now we are only operating Saturday, Sunday, and we have reduced our hours to twelve to four, rather than ten to four because we have looked over the past several years and we really weren't, you know, having any guests coming in until twelve anyway, so we thought we would try that out this year, seems to be working fine.
End date is Columbus?
Pardon me?
When we will stop the
October thirteenth.
The Columbus
Yeah, that's the final day
Long weekend, okay.
Of the boat operations. And then Sandra and I will be attending the conference, um
I saw that.
The fifteenth to the nineteenth.
Yeah.
And, you know, you will continue our programs while we're gone with our part-time staff and Tyler. Those are the highlights, there's lots of other things going on, but if you have any specific questions, I'd love to
No, I have nothing further, unless there's something else you wanna bring to our attention? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Dylan?
Yeah, so not much really to report outside of what I had put into the department head report, uh, to you guys, it's really just been, um, more of the, the same operation. We haven't had any major issues, which has been great, we just wrapped up break point chlorination, and so officially out of our compliance, just get season for one ammonia. So just kind of mothballing everything until next summer, you know, flushing everything out, making sure everything is ready to go, preparation for next summer, if you will. We've got a couple staffing things that are gonna be coming up. One of my employees, Chris, his wife is due, uh, at the end of the month, so gonna be welcoming his second child into the world, so that's exciting for them. Other than that, it's just, we're gonna be getting ready for sludge season, and that's the only other thing, really, that's all.
Everyone else calls it Fall Foliage Season.
But, uh, other than that, it's just the status quo, so.
Great.
Just to actually add to that, um, this weekend was very busy on, uh, water
The water and wastewater both, yeah.
I mean, we've been seeing very, very low numbers on the wastewater end, um, not so much on the water end, and I, I just wanted to add to something you had mentioned earlier, Rich. In terms of direct relationship between irrigation
Mm-hmm.
and our, our normal flow, if you will, we're about fifty percent normal, regular flow, fifty percent irrigation for daily usage in town right now.
Wow.
So, you know, if we're, to, to kind of put that into perspective, if we're doing seventy, eighty thousand gallons a day for wastewater, we're up around a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand gallons for drinking water. So, you know, it's, it's significant.
Yeah.
So I am adding the wells, but it, it's significant in terms of, you know, double the production, and it's not, you know, it's not being used for its intent, which is potable water.
Right.
And is that typical, you see that most summers, or is it more intense this summer?
It's more intense, every, the only thing I can tie it to, Wendy, remember a few years back, I, I don't, I can't recall if you were on the board yet, but we had a summer where we implemented that drought status, um, with water use restrictions, that was the only time I've seen it that high. Just typically we'll have rain periodically scattered throughout, and it'll keep people's grass, you know
Green enough, yeah.
Now it's kind of just, you either got like tumbleweeds or bright green or dark green grass around, uh, so. Again, just to shed a little bit of light on to, just to vary of it.
Well, you know, the fact that Green Peaks is now fully built out, and they all have irrigation systems, commercially-installed irrigation systems, residential
Right.
Uh, may account for an increase, and they're, they're on every night, as far as I know. Or every evening, I should say.
Yeah.
I don't know if all of them are on, but enough of them.
To be clear, I'm not, you know, I'm not necessarily saying that it's just irrigation that's causing, there could be other intentional purposes that are being utilized, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, more generally speaking, we're being, we've built out more, so we'd expect more
Correct.
More usage.
Yeah.
Even for someone with the sprinkler in the new house, right?
Exactly.
Just using it in a lack of rain summer. Okay.
So that's all, unless you have any questions for me?
Uh, we do not have, uh, we don't have anything on the wastewater treatment facility, anything to add there?
We, Steve and I had met with, um, our attorney and, um, Barbara Francucci, our project director from Black River Beach regarding, uh, Semil to EPA.
Right.
Um, and that's in the works right now to get, we wanna get that buttoned up and get that
Right.
kind of on the, you know, get that ball rolling, if you will.
Right.
But other than that, I, I reached out to Mario regarding subsurface, his intent, his intent is to get me something back for, about the base lodge, uh, those parking areas to get a schedule to me, or a proposed schedule, I was gonna reach out to Tim after that, um, just to see, you know, if he's, if it's amenable with them just to make sure that it's not gonna be any conflict with, if they're able to line up a, um, boring company and, and, you know, obviously I don't wanna step on any toes. So other than that, though, it's no real update, so.
You know about when you could expect to hear about the boring, or is that
So this week, he, he was intending to give me an update, uh, I had sent him an email last Friday, uh, he got back to me on Monday with a reply, more or less stating that this week he had intended to give me an update on that. Uh, they're, they're trying to find a boring company that can get to the extent that they're looking for, because it's not just like minimal basic subsurface of going down twenty feet, they wanna know more than that because of, you know, what the repercussions could be financially, you know.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So we're still on track for the thirty percent
Yes.
BOD?
Yep, nothing has changed schedule-wise since the last update we
Okay.
gave you, um, the, the only, I'm trying to think if there's anything else that's changed, I don't think anything else has come up since the last board meeting that, um, to update you on.
Okay.
If anything does, obviously, I'll make sure at the next board meeting, I'll give you a full
Well, we're getting, I mean, our next board meeting, unless we schedule, schedule a special, isn't until the twenty-fourth of September.
All right, that's, there's a three-week gap.
There's three-week gap at this time, and that BOD was supposed to be to us by
No, that, so I did get
Push to Push to October.
October, November, yeah.
Okay.
So in that, a lot of that was because they did much more work.
On the redesign?
Right.
Right.
They saved.
I remember now, thank you.
Pushing the thirty percent back, but it's, it's shaving time off on the other end.
Right.
It's kind of just moving some.
Internally, but not the overall schedule?
Right, yeah. So they're gonna save time on a lot of the architectural and A track because of all the work they've already done for us on that. Again, just kind of shifting time slots around, so.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
All right.
Just off of the wastewater treatment plan, a contract or proposal for, to work with a financial advisor, PFM management last week, or last board meeting. One of their advisors is coming up to meet with Dylan and I on Friday to do a site block of the existing facility and to give him some understanding of where the new facility's gonna be built. Just so you're aware, and I'm still awaiting a contract for them to review inside.
Okay.
Okay. All righty, and now we move on to public safety. Anything like to highlight from your report?
Yeah, nothing in there. The Heart Safe Community, that's a pretty prestigious designation for a town to be considered a heart safe community. You have to meet quite a bit of criteria, which means number of AEDs in town, access, the number of trained people in your town, and ongoing programs for CPR AED certification. And we're pretty confident that we meet that standard. So we've, we've done that, maybe you've seen them in other communities. There's a small sign that says we are a heart safe community. If you become one of those, it allows us to.
Flaunt it, yeah.
And replace the use of.
Yeah, no, that would be great. I think that'd be great.
We're here, we, we think we have a pretty good, Andrew Howe has been pretty much the person that's directing that and he's the, he's our resident CPR instructor now. So he's been working a lot with some of the school staff and gonna be working with the, some of the hotels to get some of their employees trained, so.
Great.
So once that, if we get word, I think they send a representative up, they would probably wanna have, attend one of the meetings to present the town, present you with the certificate and that, and that designation. And be up to us to be able to maintain it.
Sure.
Sounds great.
But other than that, Megan, the post went up for the speed board sign?
It is, it did, we just cemented it in, so.
Sorry.
Wait till tomorrow to put anything on it, but it is.
No problem, thank you for doing so, so we do have a sign, we're just gonna put it together.
Yep, no, I saw the post, walking around, looks good.
Where is that post located?
The guardrail.
At the beginning of the guardrail.
Guardrail by the athletic center. As you're heading north on the athletic center side, Valley Road, the guardrail begins right at the driveway.
Okay.
Just pass, it used to, actually it used to be more guardrail there as I recall until, what was it, last year? Now the guardrails.
Is that where the?
Car, whatever it was, a hundred something miles an hour.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Pat mentioned Nicole getting sworn in and then anything else. It's inspection season for us.
It always seems to be inspection season. Or maybe it's permit season one time and inspection season another.
Yeah, it's permit season, permits and inspections, but we got all the schools done within the last couple of weeks. So now the focus is on the hotels and all the commercials, so. Turning along and filling up our, filling up our calendar for July, so.
Great. I see you attended the, the meeting with Brooke Brown on that mitigation project.
Project.
Yeah.
It looks as if that in order to be considered an approval from the Forest Service, we have to get on their small projects and we can't get on their small projects till spring.
Right. So I think as we talked before, that raises the question of the authorization we have to spend money granted by the town to the board will be expired before we can actually do, we need to check on that.
That grant expires at the end of twenty twenty-five.
The grant, right.
Yeah.
What about the town portion? Was there a town portion of it?
Yeah, I have to look.
Take a look at it, so.
No, there was some work from Rick Vanderpoel that was for us, the planning, the, all the proposals and that sort of stuff, work had been done. The way I understand it, and again, I'm stepping in here, you know, upstream, but it seemed like most of our, our work was done and ready to go and.
Right, you mean I work on the culverts and stuff in town?
Well, the culverts, there are two culverts that are on town property that we probably could get done. There's a third culvert and maybe Tim knows a little bit, there was some mention of a bridge getting repaired, replaced, moved, along with a culvert that's.
Really?
Network in the same work area.
Bridge. Is it further up Snows Brook or is the one just behind?
Just behind.
Water, Water Place.
Yep.
Okay.
But that's, that was all within the work area. We may wanna consider if we have an opportunity and some money, whether it's on our side or in the grant, that we can expend some of it and maybe get some of those culverts done. Knowing that the rest of the project may or may not happen this year, then.
Right.
We, it won't affect anything else.
Well, using money we have to improve culverts is always a good idea, right? Even if we can't complete the project.
Yeah, he, he's got a full report of the condition of those and those being old metal and undersized.
The old fashioned and not always undersized and.
Yeah.
What do they call it, peaked above the?
Yeah.
We may wanna consider, you know, at least tackling those, that portion.
Yeah, that would make sense.
So from what you gathered, it's not happening this year?
Well, we not, they won't accept an application until the spring. We missed the window for the fall.
Yeah.
Small projects, so.
I just have to cancel machinery, that's what I was.
So you guys need to, need to rally up and figure out what's going on. Also, we need to bring the Conservation Commission, at least the chair, into it since this was their initiative to begin with, as I recall.
Yes.
And it's been delayed and scaled back considerably and now it looks like it's not going to be done. But there may be, there are things we can do that would still be helpful.
Yeah. But we can talk about, well, let's, let's look at what the other half of that money.
Yeah, it is.
What, what is?
The statuses, I think it was a three year, I think we had three year approval.
Those two projects.
I don't even, yeah, at least get some of that work, work done. And as I said, we had to rope in Paul, Paul R. Connor, the chair Conservation Commission and seek their advice, see what they think. Okay, anything else?
If there's any other questions on my report.
I think I have one other, but it's not coming to me, no. I'm good. I think I'm good, anybody?
No, that's good.
I had one, I always, always bring this up, that storage container with the villas, any idea how long that's, I see they moved everything else.
Yeah, they moved everything else, moving that other one is because of, there's pretty limited space on that backside, there's really no good, good spot to put it. And I think would, you know.
It is a dilemma, but I mean, we've been staring at that thing for how many years now? And he's doing it as he sells, right?
Yeah, they've been chipping away, there, there has been some activity there.
I noticed, yeah.
You know, the plumbers have been working and getting things done. And I think it's, you know, just start, I, I'd almost rather they keep it in there and all the stuff inside it than.
Right.
Stuff outside of it.
No, no, I agree with that.
I can, I can reach out to them and check in and see what the timeline is. Usually I'm hearing from when, when they need final inspections at this point now. So, and I haven't heard from anyone else.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, if you guys are okay with it, just checking in.
Yeah.
If there's one complaint, I think I get more than any other, it's that.
It's the.
Blankety blank container, cause it's right there, you know, everyone sees it all the time. And it was the other stuff, but I think, you know, they, you followed up and they got rid of the other, the dumpster and I think some of the heavy equipment they had there.
Yep.
And they cleaned up, so that was, that helped a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, chief? The one thing I forgot, just to slew back to you very quickly, Megan, I had talked to Mark, I think we talked about it at our last meeting, that the, or maybe it was just me talking to Mark after the last meeting, none of the lights on Village Trail are, come on. We have what, four lights between Snows Brook and the path that goes to the dam?
I have Bob Stark, the electrician, coming on Friday to do some work for the lift that came in yesterday. And we were gonna touch base about walkway lights. Helen Rita. I'll have him take a look at that as well and see if he can get those running so it's not dark for the winter.
Yeah, I mean, I was there, I think it was last night at nine o'clock and it was pitch black in there. And that's what I was thinking, geez, can be like this at five o'clock.
Yes, Bob, take a look when he's here as well.
And just to springboard off that, at the, cause I was also with Megan at the meeting this morning with Golden Eagle, with Tina and Doug, talked about taking two of the lights off from the bridge to use those because with six lights on the bridge, it's, it's.
It's a lot, we don't need that many.
So we thought to take two off from those, the bridge and use them going up the trail towards the Golden Eagle to light. And that way we'd have the lights and continue the look and just spread it out a bit more. And that's where.
Yeah, so maybe we can roll this all together into the lighting for Village Trail from the bridge to the culvert going under Snows Brook. You know, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, one was flickering, wasn't, I don't know if it's a, you know, they're in series, so if one goes out, then they all, they all go out or how it's.
Yeah, one is still damaged.
Well, one is damaged, one is partially dented and damaged, so we still need the repairs to those. And then there were two, but those other two aren't coming on, or if they are, not when I'm there and it's already dark.
Okay, absolutely, yeah, I'll have Stark take a look at them.
Yeah, and this other idea, sounds like it's worthy to pursue as well.
I think it would be a nice way to not have to purchase more lights and reduce the glow from the bridge.
There is still a sign, speaking of that, I know there's still a sign on the bridge, on the town square side, looking up at the Golden Eagle that says, you know, passage your own risk, it's not maintained, I think that can come down now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or at least off the bridge, I mean.
Well, there might be one coming from the other direction as well.
Is it still there?
I think so, yes.
We had talked about removing those signs. I think we're still trying to get the railing in still, but it was the, the walkway is now passable.
Good.
Okay. Steve? It's happening in admin, you can slide into the financial report too.
Yeah, any questions on the financial report?
I don't have it in front of me.
No, I didn't have any, any questions on either the, your departmental report or the financial report.
In some cases, we have lines where it shows we've, let's say we budgeted four thousand and we spent four thousand and twenty, and then it says percentage remaining and it's a negative percent.
Yeah.
And then there are other cases where there's no values put in. And I was just curious what's going on there.
Any one particular lighting?
I don't have them in front, have it in front of me unfortunately.
Well, like streetlights, you know, we've.
Speaking of lighting.
Expended more, but it just shows zero percent of budget remaining as opposed to.
A negative.
A negative.
So we should be consistent in what we're doing there, it should just be a formula that we're using.
Right, because if you look down.
Right, we're over ten percent basically.
Right.
Like at library, it does show the negative, you know, and it's probably just a cell.
I just found that confusing to my brain.
I guess the algorithm that doesn't, doesn't automatically calculate that percentage?
Uh, it should, if you just, you might even go to the formula, sometimes the formulas get messed up.
Yeah.
Spreadsheets.
Yeah.
Yeah, but actually it says ten thousand, we spent eleven thousand eight.
Right.
So it's a negative of a thousand eight eighty-nine.
Okay.
It shows zero percent remaining.
So I would, if we could just take a look at that, see if we could fix that, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same upon maintenance, I guess.
Yeah.
There are a couple of them, there's several of them like that. I guess the, I guess the program doesn't automatically calculate it across the columns.
Well, as you know, what happens is we're trying to truncate the expenses and revenues a little bit for you folks, so you're not looking at all of the minutia that makes up some of it. So maybe within that formula where we take that subsection, it's doing something there. No, so let me look at that.
Fair enough.
When I look at the detail, I'm not seeing that, so there's something, when we convert it into that summarized version.
It's not carrying, it's not carrying over.
That's fine, it's just.
Okay.
You know, when you're looking at it, it's like, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Sure enough, okay. Anything else, Steve, with the board on admin, the admin report?
I really wanna highlight outside of.
Yeah.
So I have a question. Where do we stand with respect to the town website updating? So that was supposed to be a project that we were doing towards the end of summer and we're kind of there.
Yeah, so.
Well, we got three weeks, two.
Civic Plus is the vendor that we currently use to host our website. They're a pretty common municipal website design platform that's used throughout the state. The version that we're running right now is severely out of date and I have been in communication with the, with the vendor. The most recent communication was a month and a half, two months ago, where he said we've been delayed to the winter as far as a new release goes. So one thing that I was hoping to talk to the board about is, do we wanna stay with Civic Plus? Because there will be a considerable upcharge to our design fees for twenty twenty-six with this new release? Or do we maybe wanna consider finding another design company to help us with our, with our website?
It would be interesting to see, I mean, if you know of other towns that are happy with their website and it's easy to make updates, it'd be nice to know if there's other options.
Ours is like what other, a lot of other towns subscribe to the same.
Civic Plus.
Civic Plus, right?
Yeah, it's pretty common, but there are others that other.
Completely different, yeah, when I go look at other towns, some of them is like carbon copies of ours and others are completely different. But I would think it would hurt, I mean, I think I agree.
I'm open to suggestions at this point.
See what other, what other possibilities.
I do know that we promised to do this and so I feel.
Exactly.
We should do it.
That we should do it.
Yeah.
We're obligated to, if you will.
Okay, and it could be a bigger discussion too, if we wanted to look at some type of a rebrand initiative wrapped into that. I'm open to whatever your thoughts are. I know a lot of municipalities of late have been doing a rebranding. Keen, for example, did theirs last year, that was a pretty large undertaking. When you go onto their website, there are definitely some areas that are attractive with their rebranding. It's kind of taking that old school town emblem and, you know, making it a little more current. Personally, I could go either way.
Yeah, I mean, we could see what's out there. I mean, to me, the most important thing is ease of use for the, someone who doesn't know much about how to, can you tell them, go to the website and then it's right in front of them, you know?
And ease of use on your end to. And ease of use on your end to update and make changes, I mean.
Right, of course, yeah.
That's important.
Yep. So let me, what I'll do is I'll, I'll get the pricing information again, out in front of you and I will see if I can identify a couple of other platforms that we could potentially
Take a look at, yeah.
That sounds like a great idea.
Sure.
Great plan. Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I can move on to calendar review. You guys are welcome to stay, it's, I'll leave it, leave it up to you. Next regular select board meeting, as we've said several times now, was three weeks from today, the 24th September at 3:00 P.M. The planning board next meeting is on the 11th, next Thursday, here at 8:00 A.M. And it's going to be another pretty important meeting. They're going to start with S.E. Group, their review of zoning ordinances. So I will continue to brief you guys on what, what's going on there. There are two or three things I've already mentioned to them, to the planning board that the select board is interested in clarifying in, in zoning. And as we all know, we need to, we need to change, update our zoning to comply with new state, new state law. And we still, we're still on for 3:00 P.M. for our joint Select Board, School Board meeting over at the multipurpose room on the 25th. And I think we just need, we talked about it last time, we need to pull together an agenda and I take it, Tim, you want us to pull it again, pull it together again, as done in the past, you want to just feed whatever you guys want, talk about to
Sure, if you want to circulate it to us, that'd be great.
All right. Yep, now we'll do that.
That'd be great.
Yep, okay.
Perfect.
And Brooke, anything you'd like to to add to that, you know, agenda, of course. All right. That's all I have on calendar. Now you're going to be out of town from tomorrow.
Well, the evening of tomorrow until the late morning of the 18th.
Okay, and you will be incommunicado.
Pretty much.
Okay.
Yes, might have some service, but it will be spotty.
Okay. Well, if anything really important comes up, we'll
Yeah, shoot me an email or a text.
See if we can get ahold of you.
Eventually get something.
Okay. Great, well, enjoy.
Thank you.
Anything else on calendar review?
No.
Okay. Board concerns and directives. I had a couple of things, quickly. We had talked, we had talked at the last meeting of putting a sign up that notes that Waterville Valley has the first trail system in the United States, so I'd just like to keep that on everyone's agenda, getting a sign up to that effect. I don't know how we'd like to go about
Do we have someone working on a notional design for that sign?
No, no, that's why I'm looking at Megan.
Okay.
So I have the original documents from when the study was done for sign packages
Right.
For colors and things like that. I would just need whatever wordage you're looking for and I can submit them over to the designer to design the sign.
Okay.
We should probably work with AIA on this, since it's an organization.
Yeah, I kind of got the idea from them at one, on one of the recent hikes that they had.
Who's leading it up now? I don't even know.
It's Warren.
We luck.
We luck, thank you. So, yeah, but it's, it would be something very simple, like, I don't know, you know, home of the first organized hiking trail system in the United, it's in the book.
It's, it's the first network of trails is the, is the terminology.
First network, whatever that citation is in the book, right? It comes from that book. Yeah. Book, can you work with?
It's also in our guidebook.
Yeah, could you work with Megan and just come up with something sign-worthy?
And where, I, I remember you talking about it a little the last meeting, but is, are you talking about having it near the Welcome to Waterville Valley?
Yeah, I think
Or earlier, near the freestyle?
We haven't decided, but I think in that area would make sense, right? I mean, we could
In that area, but we shouldn't block the freestyle sign, I mean, I think
So
Birthplace of freestyle.
Well, we have, we'll have to deal with the Forest Service in the state, unless we put it on the other side, right, from not that's, not the welcome sign, but on the other side, that's completely town property, right of way.
Across the street.
Across the street.
Welcome sign, so it's very hard different than the freestyle.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess we could find that out and see what the options are.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, thank you. I mean, it doesn't have to be there in that general area. I mean, we could always put it at the very entrance of the town, which is way back by, you know, up at Mad River Road. Although that would require
Board, oh.
Requires the state.
That would require, but if we could do, it obviously would be easier if we don't have to get Forest Service or the state involved. I mean, just put the sign in our, our right of way. And it could be a little bit further down the road to, you know, pass Tecumseh.
Skiing sign, is that ours or is that?
Sure is.
Okay.
Does it need to be redone?
Does it need love?
It needs, it needs a little bit of love. It's warping and stuff, but we're just talking with our sign designers about possibly doing a more long-term sign. Something that won't
All right, well, continue that.
Yeah, present us with something, I think, would be a good idea. I think we're certainly amenable towards keeping the town looking good.
Yeah, take a look at it, whether it's still good there or whether it may be better someplace else.
I wonder if they, can I?
Yeah, please.
So, the, the hiking is just such a cool thing about the entire town and it really would make a lot of sense if it was down at entrance to the town, down by Mad River. Because the hiking trails really do start
Yeah.
Not that far down.
That's right.
So I'm just wondering if it would be worth reaching out to the DOT and try and find out what it would take to get something that was some sort of an official sign that
Yeah.
Put down in that area. I think that's going to get a lot of bang for the buck for the town.
Yeah, no, that's why I thought that may be a good, a good area as, as well. It's, we've done it, we placed the, you know, welcome, well not, but you know, entering Waterville Valley sign, that's, I think if there are, that's the state, I don't, it's in the state right of way, isn't it? So, yeah, I mean, as part of your look at this, see how complicated it would be to just to have that as an option.
Might be a nice PR bet for travel and tourism too.
Yeah, right there would be a good place to put it. But let's see what the complications are. There's no hurry on this at all, but it just would
It'd be good.
Let's
Sounds good.
Let's, yeah, advertise, a great time. The other thing I was thinking of, and Tim, maybe you could comment on this as well. I'm still somewhat dissatisfied with the setup we have here for the camera and the things. I'm still getting comments that, you know, it's partially the board's fault that we can't hear or we can't see people because we don't, we don't always tell people you have to come up in front of the microphone, but the school board uses something called an owl. And that seems to automatically catch everything, right? It swivels, you can have multiple angles.
It works well. It's, it's definitely better than what you have here. As you can see, the, the people talking behind the camera.
Right.
It is pricey, I won't lie on that one.
Do you know off the top of your head?
Twelve hundred dollars, I want to say.
Oh, that's
So that was, that was, I believe that was a cost, but I'm not 100% on that.
Right.
It does move the camera though and zoom in on the person that's talking.
Right, I've noticed that.
It does improve the, the overall video quality
Right.
When you're looking at it online. But from my perspective, from watching this, I don't know how many times, this, I don't have a problem with what you already have going on. The audio is pretty good.
Okay.
It's been improved over the past year. I don't know if we changed your microphones, but the audio is much better than it used to be.
We did, I mean, with these.
Yeah, that, that works great. And the video aspect of it would help though, if you could turn and it would, that owl's pretty nice.
I think we should just do it.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, look at it, see what the price is and
I the cost is minimal in my mind
There's a bunch of different aspects to the owl though.
Yeah.
Steve has probably looked into it.
Yeah? Steve, you're looking, you're not looking happy back there?
No, it's okay. I, in response to some of the concerns that were shared with me, we had our New Hampshire Audio-Visual Specialists coming down to the town
Right.
Late last week to perform some testing.
Oh, okay.
He's actually on YouTube today listening to make sure that all of the testing and recommendations he made to Kristen are actually working, so I'm waiting to get some feedback
Okay.
About how he feels the quality is on the, on the meeting today.
Okay.
Both audio and visual. Yeah, I agree with the owl, it's, we've used it at the multimedia room for I think a budget hearing last year. And it was okay. I don't think that the microphone captured as the audio from the, the guests who are coming up to, to speak as, as clearly as we would like to, but there might be workarounds with additional add-ons to the owl that, that might compensate for that, I'm not sure, but I'd be happy to look into it if that's something you would like to do.
Well, it would be interesting to know what the New Hampshire Audio-Visual
Yeah, since he's got him evaluating, so let's see what he says.
Kind of looped in.
He did tweak one of the sound options that wasn't on
Okay.
when he was here, and it was an upgrade that the system through Zoom had made after he had already installed the system. So until he came and saw it, he didn't know that it wasn't on.
Okay.
So he showed us how to put it on for every meeting, so hopefully even today's meeting is going to come across a lot clearer. We tested every microphone, we increased the, all the volumes and the different bases that he had on there.
Okay, maybe that'll resolve it then. Let's see, let's see what he comes back and says.
Yeah.
I sat there like each of you and spoke in your manner, so that
Oh, nice. Is that recorded? I like to hear that. But I think
What I will say is that the when I participated via Zoom during the last meeting, I had a very difficult time hearing Tim. However, the recording was fine and I could hear Tim fine during the recording, but I could not hear him fine during the actual Zoom meeting.
Was that the meeting where Tim provided some commentary from the chair or was he up speaking at the microphone?
I couldn't tell you because I can't see.
That's the thing that the camera
So then he probably was sitting at the chair.
Well, except we're not, we're not great about moving the microphone in front of the camera, so he could have been on the microphone and we just, the camera just is stationary and we're like in this tunnel and people, people have complained to me about it, that they have trouble knowing who's
Even putting the mic on the stand and turning it on will help capture this audience a little bit better if they don't actually approach the, the microphone, so just something to consider.
All right. Okay, well then, let's move along. I think, let's see what, let's see what the review analysis comes up with.
I did test the hand microphone and stood in the back of the room over there and did a test with him.
It may be just being more observant of getting people who speak to the place they need to be. Or maybe there's something we can plunk in the middle, like an owl that just swivels around and it's
Are you trying to capture people on the camera, these, the, the audience?
Yes.
Part of it, yes.
I think that is part of it.
Some of them, I think that's the reason they position the chairs, that some people don't want to be captured.
Yeah, well
I mean, if you're a public meeting, you should be
It's a public meeting.
Observe of that, yes.
Right, it's a public meeting, but we can look at these things, I think it would be helpful to to do this a little better, I guess.
The only thing I'd add regarding the owl, we use them at, are using owl at the Base Water Certification Committee meetings. And the only issue that I can, that I've seen is it flips very quickly, so it makes the visual end of it difficult to watch. Because whenever people move, if it makes any sound
It'll, it'll capture that? Oh, okay.
It's clicking constantly, depending on
That's too much.
Yeah.
Little motion sickness.
Vertigo.
It's not configured properly too, but just something that I've seen firsthand is that it's, it's really hard to watch.
Okay, fair enough, that's good to hear, yeah. I've never seen it in action, other than at the, at the school board meetings. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have anything on for ex officio reports or concerns?
I had one little thing, just circling back to what we were talking about before with Megan and my meeting with Golden Eagle Lodge. They were being quite overcharged for the bucket, they were providing buckets that were being filled with, with ice melt, so folks walking down the pathway in the winter
I remember, right.
Could spread it if it hadn't been. And they were being really overcharged from our perspective on the buckets themselves. So, that perhaps as it gets to budget season, perhaps we could pitch in with the buckets that could go
Sure.
You know, something nice looking that could be set there.
That aren't abused. That was the other.
Probably some sort of lid system to enclose it so nothing gets wet as far as the snow melt. So anyway, that was just one little thing that came up this morning.
Okay.
So just
And the, the Town Core Working Group has moved to a
To a
As needed?
Exactly.
Schedule?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, anybody? All right, moving on to correspondence. I don't see anything, I haven't seen anything. I take it there is no correspondence to the board. Alrighty, well then I think it's time to move into our non-public session. So, thank you. Everyone listening out there and anyone who's here, thank you for coming. Chief, would you be available to stay a bit longer and Steve? Do you have a motion to